Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our October twenty fifth work session. Would you all please stand and I will lead you in the. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Review of the agenda, please.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. There have been no changes in the agenda. The board received just a technical update today. That's reflected in the packet that is in front of you tonight and no further communication.
Thank you very much. Let me remind everyone that this is a work session. There will be no business conducted and no formal votes. Is an opportunity for us to communicate openly and freely with the things that are on our agenda. With that being said, I'm going to turn the meeting over to.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity tonight to be with you at the work session. I am going to. Share my slides here with you. All right. So tonight, I appreciate the opportunity to visit with the board about professional learning. And I, this will conclude with a recommendation to the board. But I want to start tonight with this slide, which is the board adopted strategic plan. And this tonight, you've seen this, you've developed this, and I appreciate that. This really represents our ideal state. And in this ideal state, every student of ours would receive the care, support, and instruction they need. To graduate from high school and with plans for their most successful futures. And before we kind of go forward here a little bit, I would call your attention to. The strategic plan actions that are identified around this circle. And these are really key levers or mechanisms, if you will, to realize the board's charge of making sure that all students receive. Care, support, and instruction they need. As we, as we take a look at what our current state is, so again, from ideal state, what we expect to see with all kids. Ideally, moving into this current state, I share with you tonight the most recent. O D E state report card that came out about a week ago. This is a picture of, it's not the only picture of our current state, if you will, but it is a picture of our current state. And we won't, we will spend some time at a future meeting going through some data that will include this data. But essentially, this report is broken into a couple of different sections about starting strong and it has. Attendance with our most, our youngest kids, K two. And academic progress, which wasn't available during the pandemic, and then some high school success features. So you can see from this district report card. That there is work to do in our current state now. Couple notes for you here. This is, this comes from the twenty one, twenty two, last year's data. With the exception of the graduation rate, which actually is from two thousand twenty twenty one. So again, ideal state, current state, and you can see if we just take a look at some measures here. Below Oregon's average with K two attendance. Again, this was last year, but this is last year for everybody in Oregon. We're below average in English Language Arts in third grade. We are above average, but a little bit above average, eighth grade math, but thirty one percent is nothing to get too excited about. Around the average on on track graduation and then, and then are on track to graduate and on time graduation. As a district in two thousand twenty twenty one school year, so and and May of, or June of twenty one. Well below. The state average, however, just for clarity's sake, if you move to the next. Slide here, which is, which is the report card, same year, same report card release for Roseburg High School. At the bottom left, the on time graduation is eighty nine percent actually for the high school. Well, actually above this, the state average of eighty one percent. This, important to point that out. This data set reflected both Rose Elementary and his last year as well as Phoenix. The, the delta between sixty nine percent of district on time graduation rate versus eighty nine percent of the high school. Yes, Phoenix has a, an effect on that data as, as did Rose, Rose. As well in this last year. Yeah, so the twenty percent delta in that data. So as we move forward in this. You know, there's the, this, I want to talk for a few minutes about what kind of call a through line and supporting teacher and student learning. Can be called a theory of action. I would say it's more than a hypothesis, if you will. This is an evidence based theory that we see throughout our country and other countries across the world. And that essentially comes down to a couple of things that leaders cannot lead what they don't understand. And they need practice in doing that. Teachers need time to learn and to solve and to solve problems and to practice and to practice. To hone their skills, better training and support equals better teaching. And better teaching equals increased student learning. This theory has a deep, has a, a deep area of analysis and research. And I present this to you tonight as something to think through that in a system that allows leaders to get better and develop. And allows teacher time to learn and to practice and to get better at their craft. There is not only correlational impact, but actually causational impact, which is what you need to see. Going, if we take a look at our, the strategic plan and you, we read through these measures. On appropriate and timely instruction. It's actually the first page I had of this slide in here. This teachers will have the resources needed to effectively support and scaffold student learning. That doesn't come with a curriculum adoption alone. It comes with an opportunity to practice and to learn. Leadership development, our leaders will have the tools to be exceptional instructional leaders. That doesn't come with a book we give them and say, this is the book to become an instructional leader. It takes practice. And we could talk about a whole bunch of things we're doing in there. We're, we're working with principals right now and how to give effective feedback to teachers. So teachers can hone their craft and get better and ideally give effective feedback to kids. So this model, as we think about it, is really, really critical. And essentially, if we take an audit of where we're at, we look at the effective. Operations side of things that will have exceptional learning environments, I would say this. Our staff needs more time to practice. Our staff needs more time to learn and our kids deserve an opportunity to increase in their learning as well. All right, moving on real quick, I, we took the district strategic plan, these three areas of care, support, and instruction. What you're going to see on that next page is a sample of the professional learning. Not just opportunities, but obligations that our staff have this month alone. Broken down by the strategic plan areas of care, support, and instruction. This is not an exhaustive list of the professional development offered. And remember, our current model is we have one hour per week of professional learning. Some of these. Offerings are mandatory, not generated necessarily by our school district. They may come down as mandates from the state that you must have this, your organization must have training in this. For example, suicide prevention is one of those things. We see this in medication training and, you know, the, the, the items you see here plus more. And the reality is we're trying to provide staff with an opportunity to think deeply and get the support they need. But staff, week after week and year after year, have talked to many in this room, potentially yourselves as well, and said, we just need more time. To both understand and synthesize and practice and work through these. So with that in mind, I come to the board tonight with a recommendation. And the recommendation is, in an effort to support our kids and our staff. And the board adopted strategic plan, which has been adopted. That I recommend tonight to the board that we shift from our current weekly Wednesday, one hour early release. To a two hour early release. Model that's weekly effective next year. I would advocate that. Yep, you can, yep.
I don't want to reveal all my sins here, but if you said. Early out on a Friday, I'm going to view that as an early weekend, okay? Why are you so set on Friday? Or why, 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 why Friday?
Yeah, I mean, the recommendation is Friday, and I think this is something we can definitely discuss here. Friday aligns a little better with some of the, I mean, I've had conversations with parents around Wednesdays. And what I often hear around Wednesdays is, do you prefer Wednesdays? And Wednesday is just kind of what parents say, this kind of just happened to me. With Wednesdays, we're not, I don't know the decision, I wasn't here when Wednesday was made. It's become a kind of a. It's become an expectation that kids are going to go home an hour earlier Wednesday and we're going to do professional learning on Wednesdays. And, and I wouldn't call it empirical study in talking to parents. The Friday, for two reasons, I would recommend Friday. And we can do broader surveying of this, it's fine. It does align with our county. The county has. Either several districts, no school on Wednesday. Excuse me, on Friday, or professional learning set aside for Friday. Several districts around us have carved Friday out for professional learning or for actually no school on those days. So that would be one. And the second one really is, is in, at least in conversations with parents, not. I didn't bring this as a recommendation to parents before the board, clearly, but just asking people about the day. I heard from parents on the early release of, you know, if, if something ever shifted. We ask questions about how are things going? What is your experience been? Parents would often say, is there any way to make that early release on a Friday?
I understand what you're saying and I really do it, but I'm worried that. Are we doing this for the parents? Are we doing this for the students? And if we're doing it for the parents, then Friday works, okay? If we're doing it for the students, I worry that teachers are going to view it. As an early weekend and then be like, oh yeah, professional development, sure, I'm out, you know, early release. And my, why not, why not do it, do a late start one day, you know, or another day? Or, and my, another thought is, if we're really concerned about these, these. Metrics that we're not doing as great as we should be at. Is robbing kids of another hour of education through the day, is that really the, the key to make that better? I don't know. And I'm not, I'm not an educator and I, and I fully admit that, but.
So, so I would just say real quick. Yeah, so point well taken on a Friday. I mean, I, I, the previous district I was at, Friday was actually a, a topic of conversation. Because the, they didn't want the perception to be, let's just say you've got a school A is actually going to school B to do some work together. Let's say third grade team is going to meet with another third grade team. The, you know, some districts or boards may be concerned about what even the perception would be. Now, I don't have any evidence that we've had any, at least since I've been here, and, and there's been some strange years with COVID. That we have had an exodus of staff on a Wednesday afternoon. I don't, I don't believe we would have an excellence of staff if we picked another day, whether it was Wednesday, Wednesday or Monday or Friday. I would say this, one of the things to, to be clear about is this would not be taking time away from kids. So this would be instructional hours would stay the same in this model. An expectation, if you look at that slide, the first thing up in that expectation is there we will maintain instructional hours for kids. So this would be the addition of time. In order to make more time.
I wholeheartedly. From experience, know that improving the amount of time for professional learning is. Important and significant. It will make a difference. I also think that our Wednesday, one hour out early is absolutely inadequate, especially if you want to do any like multi building. And what it has done to kids is that when they need to do significant professional learning, they end up getting subs. And so then your kid has, then your student has a substitute teacher while all the math teachers meet together. Instead of saying, we actually have a good chunk of time that we can meet together without pulling the teachers out of the classroom. So I actually am all for increasing the amount of time. I do wonder about a different day. I do wonder if it's better as a late start. Here's my big concern, though. When you have a seven period day in a secondary school. Already Wednesdays trying to teach in a truncated schedule. It's like drive by. I mean, it's like not effective instructional. And, and I mean, that could be addressed by possibly saying. Okay, on the first and third Fridays, you do periods one through four. And on the second and fourth Fridays, you do advisory and five, six, seven, so that those class periods are. Enough time to actually do something real, like you could solve that kind of problem, but already. Early release Wednesdays at the secondary level, by the time you get kids in and settled and try to start instructing in that. Tiny amount of time, it's like, see you later, bye, thanks for coming. So I worry about at the secondary level, if that release. Is going to be significant, which makes me wonder if. You know, a, another option being, what if every third Friday, the whole day was off? Is that worse for families? But then the teachers would still, of course, be working, but they would have all day meetings. So I, I don't know where the answer is.
Um, how much time is in between classes, you know?
Five minutes on average.
So, you know, thirty minutes in a day. That.
Passing grade. Yeah, I, I mean, I think so, so I'm, I'm making notes here. And, and really, you know, I'm hoping tonight, this is, there will, this, this is what the work session is supposed to be tonight, so I appreciate. For all whatever questions you have out there, we don't expect a decision today.
So. I might have minority opinion here and, and that's fine. I'm, I'm used to being in the minority. Have we thought about A and B days, you know, eight periods? For one day, for the next. And then. I know some people have strong opinions about this and I've heard some of that.
How does that help teacher?
What you, maybe one day is off every third week or something like that. I went through school like that and I liked that I had eight classes and it benefited me. And I've had instances with a couple of my kids where they wanted to take another class and they couldn't because of requirements for different band things and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I know some of the administration does not like that idea, but that's okay.
Yeah, no, I, I think there's a lot of different learning models. I mean, that third bullet was really about. You know, whatever the board supports as we move forward on this, it will take working with staff on, on a professional learning design. So whether that be, you know, if it's, if it's two hours on, let's say it's Fridays or it could be Wednesday. Really, I don't, I don't know. I'm not, I don't know how to quantify the impact of which day it is. I, I think that's the, to me, the least important to me. But we would have to do some work with, with parents. We'd have to do some work with our staff on how to, we'd have to do some scheduling to make sure.
And when you're working, what do you mean by working? You mean just like clarification, transparency? What do you mean by work?
Work is design work. Like if you're, if we now go to a two hour release, I mean, some good points were brought up, we've talked about as well. What does that look like for the day in which the release happens? Like, is there, is there? You know, where is that point where you're getting the benefit of that extra time at the cost of maybe a reduced effective day for children, right? So it'd be something like, maybe you think about something different. Maybe you're blocking the two hours over two weeks or you're blocking a classroom.
The reason I like the, the four in a day is that if you take off an extra hour, those classes aren't as truncated as opposed to seven. Okay, and if you do it, say, every week, then it flips to the other, you know, the other four classes. So the same classes and be affected same way every week. And I'm just, I'm just throwing ideas.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. And, and I think kind of what you're, maybe what I'm hearing is similar to what. Like your Larson said, which is you might do something where you had odd and even periods that do. A longer day on the release day and, and it alternates, which is probably similar to what you're saying on that block schedule.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all for, I'm all for in supporting. More, you know, another hour of professional learning during the week. I just want to make sure we're thoughtful about the process in talking to families and talking to teachers. And, and, and then, and really, yeah, and then really stepping back and saying. You know, because I already know high school students who sometimes on a Wednesday say. I'm not going to school. My classes are all twenty five minutes long. I hate advisory. And they're like, I'm not, I'm not going to bother by the time I get through. It's pointless, right? Nothing real happens on that day because my classes are too short. I just want to avoid that because. I, that does impact student learning because that's another, you know, touch point. So I, I just want to make sure that whatever plan we do moving forward. Makes the instructional hours we have meaningful, if that makes sense. And.
I don't think everybody can get behind that.
Yeah, and, and so that, and that might be different. I mean, and that might be, and I'm not, I don't know how it impacts busing and meals. And families to do a late start to say the kids show up at ten that day. And the school ends at the same time, but the teachers get to show up two hours early. I don't know, I don't know what the better solution is. Obviously, if we did that, we'd still have to consider how we're blocking those secondary classes to make that instructional time. Meaningful, but I, I guess my. I guess my comment is, I support increasing professional development. I have a concern about. How this looks at a secondary level as far as. Meaningful instruction.
Now, we, we did have a, a period of time with block scheduling at the secondary school. Sometime in the past, my memory fails me. And, and then we changed it back to the standard schedule. And I don't know if we have a formal report or analysis about what the problems were then or not. I just know that block scheduling was popular and thinking about it, and then after we had it, it was unpopular. Second thing is when, when we're bargaining. The teachers are always wanting to have more prep time. And there's a competition between prep time and professional development time and ineffective teaching time. And you got to be a magician to balance all that out. I, I could imagine, you know, complaints that, oh, we got to do this professional development, so we don't have time to prepare for our classes. So we got to protect those or, or make sure that part of professional development is learning to. Learning how to learn faster. Third thing is drafting divorce documents and parenting times. We've traditionally said that your, the non custodial parents alternate weekend time will begin after school on Friday. And I don't know if it's a coincidence, but they, when I drafted, when I said after school or at three P M, whichever is later. Friday, it's those different times to affect those things, but whether that's helpful or harmful is just a, a side effect on the world.
I'm probably going to be in the minority. Or maybe you'll join me.
Good company.
And remember why we're doing this. And, and we spent ten minutes talking about secondary, but are really, we have really big issues in our primary. So I'm not sure we can run the same model. For both secondary and primaries, personally.
I agree.
I, I think we need to think outside of the box and do something different because our little ones really need the help. I don't like Fridays. I think it's a, and I'm going to get trouble, but I don't care. They can fire me. I think it's a really, one of those days where it's similar to me like Wednesdays where. I, you know, I get off a couple hours early. I'm not even going to go to school today. We'll, we'll start our vacations early. And, and, and there will be some. Abuse from our staff members. From it, I'm, I'm sorry, I've been on this board twenty nine years and we have this discussion about. Personal, professional development and all that, every year. We have spent millions and millions of dollars and it's just, it's a, it's a. We haven't had COVID, but we've still, and it's just one of those cycles that. We can't get a handle on it. We've tried this, we've tried that, the Wednesday thing, there was a lot of thought put into that. Wednesday thing, I, I think. We've had this discussion, we've done some of it. I think teachers want less foo foo stuff. They want to be able to teach their kids, most of our educators, and as I'm talking about primary, I mean. Teaching kids to read, basic math. I could, I'm not a teacher, but. I probably could do that. Just through osmosis around this board. But we need to be very careful on professional development, in my opinion. That's not wasted. I think we've had some wasted. Time. And, and I want us to look at maybe separating the secondary and the primary. And, and I also want us to think about maybe those days that. Because my book, we are taking time away from kids. I can't figure it out, you know, somewhere along the line that hours coming out somewhere. Right? I don't understand, you know.
It, it would be an increased instruction time of an hour a week.
So that might be a. Oh, well, we'll be, sorry, you know, we'll be, you know. Yeah, but I don't, that to me is silly. Fifteen minutes a day. Sorry, but.
You start early.
Make that four days longer or earlier.
Make Monday through Thursday longer and Friday shorter.
I have one more thing that, that I'll be quiet for a little bit. What I would, my dream, and I'm talking primary right now, is. I wish we could build in to like the day that we have professional development somehow where. We had, we had the, that, those two hours could be spent on hopping those kids. I don't think you can force it, but you say, hey, parents, we have, we have, we, a two hour, extra two hour block. On Fridays or Sat or Wednesdays, whatever, where we can help your child with math and reading. We think it would be very beneficial. And that's just that, I think Southern does something like that.
On their Friday.
On their Fridays. And I, I would like to see that. I think that.
Is Southern them four days a week?
Uh, four and a half. So anyway, I, I would like to see that where instead of we wait till, I mean, we do it weekly, but. I'd like to see a little bit more extra time for those kids somehow. Uh, weekly, but it's got, I think it's got to be separated. We can't, it can't be the same schedule for. I don't see how that would work.
And when you say same schedule, you're not saying separate the day.
Separate, I don't, I'm not saying separate the day, but. We've talked about, you know, changing the scheduling, block scheduling. I don't know if I'm not in favor of that personally. That's what I had when, maybe that's what you had too, but. I don't want the little ones to get lost. Because that's really, I'm looking in, and I read there were a good article that were going in this morning. And McMinnville. Basically, superintendent or maybe it was some, somebody else's, we're just, we need to spend more time with our kids. We need to spend more time with our kids.
So are you adding like a four day week?
I have no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't go with a four day week. Personally, but. I'm done.
I had a couple of questions. What percentage of that? Professional development time is on this, on the mandated sort of training? Versus just, just nuts and bolts training of.
So when you say, can you clarify mandated? Well, are you talking about like suicide training? The mandated ones that we're required to do?
The more external, besides the, you know. Real instructional professional development.
The majority of our professional development is the instructional professional development. And like for S B fifteen fifty two for the suicide training, our staff is doing an hour and a half training. That they're required to do. So that's.
For the year.
For the year that we're required to do. Some of the other required trainings, it's an hour, two hours. But what we need, the training time that we need is for the instructional cases for our instructional framework.
The instructional cases for our instructional framework, for E L A, for math. For interventions that we need to be providing, that we're providing for our students. Having time to for special education teachers to be familiar with curriculum, that's the time that we need.
Okay. And and I think that I'm all for that because I think we've got a lot of new teachers. Um, we've got a lot of new staff. That that training is imperative if we want to see these numbers go up. Um, and that. That is what we're about. That's what we're looking for. So um. However, that can be done, you know, I think it it needs to be increased. And we've got to figure out the timing for it. Because I, we can spend like Rod, we can spend more time with them, but if it's not. Like well established, well developed quality time. It it's, it's just has to be in line with what we're, with their instructional ability. To to take these kids where we really need them to go to be successful. That is the outcome we want, the successful outcome. So um. As I was driving here, I was thinking about Friday and it seemed to make sense. But then I, the thought came to me about Friday afternoons. I'm a high schooler. I know I'm gonna get off early anyway. I just might not show up, you know, I'll start my weekend early, you know, and. I I'm afraid that there's some staff that will feel a little bit along those lines too. That, uh, you know, an extended weekend or a long weekend would. Would be good too. So maybe Friday, and then what about sports? I mean, I don't know how that affects the sports calendars on Fridays.
Yeah, yeah, we, I mean, these are details we would work out. So essentially, I mean, tonight, I think the ask of the board and and I'm happy to take any other questions from the board, please.
So we're adding adding an hour of instructional for teachers, but the students aren't learning, losing anything. But now we're gonna have to pay the teachers next hour. What is that gonna do to our payroll costs? They're gonna stay, they don't get paid for it.
Add an additional hour for them. It's it's this, it's the same amount of time. They're working the same amount of time.
So how are how are the teachers gaining an hour, but the students aren't losing an hour?
In our CBA, we have mandated instructional time and mandated prep time. Uh, there is a block of time that isn't accounted for. So by increase, we're not increasing the instructional hours per week. We're just rearranging that. So it's not like teachers are gonna work past their contracted time, but we are adjusting their schedule during the week.
So what are they getting taken away from to gain this hour?
That time that's in between. So uh, time before school, after school, um. We can only count prep time if it's in increments of thirty minutes or greater. So there's often times that are shorter than that, like around recess and stuff. So there is, so those two things don't add up to forty hours.
Okay, so this is the teacher's personal break time, basically, you guys are taking away. Moving over into.
That is unaccounted time, so we don't, so we have, they have prep time and they have their duty free lunchtime that's mandated. Um, and then we also mandate the instructional hours per the week.
I would just, one last thing, I'd ask the teachers, would they would prefer to have this extra hour of instructional time, or would you prefer to have your? Your soda time or whatever you wanna call it, walk in between class time, I guess. I I would be interested to know what the teachers would prefer on that.
I just um. And and all the time I've been on the school board, I do think that we teach better now than we did in the dark ages. Um, used to be that we knew good teachers because we knew they were good teachers and that was all and. Sometimes they were good people, but they were not particularly good at dealing with a wide variety of kids. I I think we're much better at that sort of thing. Also, I had a sort of a question that in in the dark ages. Uh, elementary teachers and it's been all sorts of time handwriting and books about scores for things and averaging up and. Doing arithmetic and handwriting reports. And now we have these computer programs which. In theory, would make things more efficient. I know in my world, the computer seems to have made things more complicated, but I I don't know how over time. The the teaching environment has changed in a bunch of different ways. The concerns all seem to be the same, but the tools are different.
Yeah, I think teachers, I mean, if you're, if you're, I think are, if you were to ask our staff, um. I think teaching does look a little different today. I think the expectations are different. I also think the variance of kiddos coming into our classrooms ranges pretty wildly in terms of. How kids come in, the standard deviation, I think, used to be this in a classroom, elementary classroom. Through probably a whole bunch of metrics. Um, it might be around academics, it might be around behavior, it might be where they're at, you know, socially and. Um, I do think. Um, I do think the expectations have continued to be increased on teachers. And we need to have commensurate opportunity for them to learn and grow and develop. And the other thing. I think that mentioned, mentioned tonight too, that I didn't really put in this report, but I appreciate being mentioned tonight is. We, the the long term trajectory of the days where we had twenty five applicants per position. I don't know that we're gonna get back to that in maybe my lifetime. It doesn't look like that right now. In other words, what that means is we have to have systematically a plan and to. To help train teachers to really think about the development of people in the profession. Not just as classroom teachers, but in any of the positions that they're in. Um, and so I think that's, I think it's a key strategy as we think about how to, how to have a healthy system. Where people feel like they can do this. We've had, we've had a few resignations from people that are just like, I I can't do this. And what. Many of those have been that we, they haven't had the training to be successful in there to start. And so it is a hard place to be. If you haven't ever worked in that, an environment where. You have, you have the training to be effective, then you're, don't feel like you are effective, then you're thinking, I just not a good thing for me. And I think. I think this uh this small addition in time will have, will have not just implications on. Outcomes for kids, but even on the system to be able to hire and retain and recruit and. And be able to maintain our workforce, that that's gonna be critical for us moving forward.
Uh, I don't want to think that, I don't think professional folks think that, I don't believe in professional development, because I do. So a couple of questions. Was there a team of folks that worked? On, I mean, did you come up with this stuff? This this pack or was there a team of teachers that have been working on suggestions like this?
I I talk with teachers all the time and we're doing our five D instructional framework training that we have teams of teachers that are attending. So I've been having conversations with them. We have every teach, we have every school represented. And the, what keeps coming back in every professional development. Of as we're trying to move things along to improve student learning is time. We need, because. What we are working on is deep and takes time for them to really get into and then to go and implement it and share it. In their buildings, because these are teacher leaders that are being trained and then they go to train the people and support the other teachers in the buildings. And it's time. And I was meeting with them, with the high school and middle school teacher leaders today. And again, they were really interested to see what was happening. Some of them are on tonight, listening because they need more time.
And I think that's really important. That's why I asked for the board to know they, they're involved.
So here's what I'll say, our formal structures that we have in place around professional learning and feedback and being in classrooms has led to this informal. Report, right?
And that's, that's great.
Commission a group to say, go figure this out. It really comes in the way that we've designed trying to listen to people.
I think that's important. Then another thing is, I'm not sure how to put this tactfully. The folks that are the new, new teachers that are coming. Just graduating, is there an issue? Why? I mean, do. Why are we having to do all this?
So the new teacher. I I can tell you, new teachers coming out don't have formal training in the instructional materials that we use. Um, our instructional framework that we implement in our buildings and they have. The knowledge in the pedagogy that they've learned being in in school, but the, when the rubber meets the road. Using the curriculum and the materials, they need further support for that. Um, plus classroom management, all of those pieces that you can do during student teaching, but it's not the same that's having your own classroom.
I would suggest uh the the article that I read in Oregon. Some districts really hit home about that, you know, you know, we, we're, you know, how much time they're having to spend. Coming into a new district and it's just like.
Well, and and looking at the list that Jared had up there. New teachers, things like five oh fours and tag plans and are not always covered, you know. There, so I, I I mean. I think all of us are on the same page. Let's make it work. I think all of us have concerns about. The best way to make it work for families and for students and for teachers, right?
So let me say something, if I may, at this point in the conversation. I do not want to hear ever again. A fifth grader come to a board meeting and says, we had a very good makeup snow day. I watched a movie all day. Remember the Titans? He told us the title that he watched. It was a snow day. We were making it up. I think I've heard enough conversation tonight to make the following statement. We are in agreement, we need more time. We are in agreement, there's a lot of logistic that has to be worked out. What we need to do tonight is to give the superintendent authorization to proceed with working out the logistics. To come back to us for approval. But if we sit here and discuss for this length of time, whether it be on Tuesday, whether it be on Wednesday, whether it be on Friday. We should not let the day of the week hinder us from getting to the objective goal. To give our teachers more professional training in a timely manner, so that our student can graduate on time, better prepared. We don't, we shouldn't let this Friday hold us up. And that's all we need tonight is to say, superintendent, start gather the data, find out. What's the best plan? What day is the best plan? How do we structure classes? How do we structure transportation? How to restructure parents? How to restructure input? And I'm gonna say last but not least, there's no way in hell you can please everybody. You're gonna have to make a decision for the best of the majority and that's what's gonna have to be done. Excuse my.
If, and I'm sure that you've been in touch with the other superintendents that are already on the four day or four and a half day. Um, you know, getting their feedback and, you know, statistics like attendance and things.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I. Yeah, so I've talked to superintendents from uh several in Oregon, uh California, Minnesota. Florida, Boston, and a few others, just under professional learning structure. And I really was looking for, show me the longitudinal data that this has worked, if you've made a change. And I had a chance to speak to several people around the country about that, actually. Um. So I I think I really appreciate the feedback. This is what a work session is supposed to be, and please don't apologize for asking a question. This is great. It's what we need to do. So I think if it, if it meets um the eye of the board. What I will do is I know that we need to get some additional data. I think I really appreciate the board wants to see some additional data. This is gonna be, um, we'll work to get more information from our staff. We'll work to get more information from our parents. We have some boxes to check on some design components. Transportation, some of those things, and I'll be prepared to come back to the board with some, to at least some of those. Um, answers for you or some of the data to show in terms of some ideas at the November board meeting. I really do feel an obligation though for our parents and our employers, that if we're gonna be making this shift, and I think the board is. Um, in agreement with the need to add more time, that we do it in a way that allows them to plan for that. Uh, so I would hope and encourage us to be, you know, I, to me, December is that time where we gotta feel pretty good about what that plan's gonna be. Uh, our calendar committee is doing work by then and and it'd be good to have this embedded in what we do. Um, we'll work with our teachers on this. I don't, I don't believe it's gonna require an M O U with the association. Most of our contract language is about instructional matches, as Robert said. And also plan time minutes and this is, this, we don't really have um professional learning as part of our collective bargaining. But we clearly will wanna work and ask questions and continue to ask question of our employees about what will work for you. Um, so we'll do that and I'll um have something to report. Uh, if you have questions between now and then, answers you want um that you have, we'll do our best to get some um quantitative and qualitative. Information back that will probably help us better uh be informed on making decisions.
We're not allowed to take a vote. Other than the work session, but I would, I would like to be. Comfortable given the superintendent. Some understanding to move forward to get the data done. You wanna choose the objection to that?
He he can, he can go walk the tight wire and we'll see if he followed up or not. Permission to walk.
Now, we need, we need to get more, uh, I think the the objective that we're trying to do tonight is that. And I repeat with ridiculous, Dr. Larson, just that we need to make sure that everything is. In the best interest of the students, best interest for our community, and so we can attract the uh competent, qualified teachers. And it keeps them positively trained to move forward on the same page. So the the big question we have tonight was, do we go one hour to two hour? We go, they guess, let's go to two hours. Let's work out a little logistic to make it happen with the the most effective and the least costly. That's how I see things.
Great. Okay.
With that being said, is there any other items to bring before this work session? If not, may I remind you, our next regularly scheduled meeting on November sixteenth. Will be at the Roseburg Virtual School on Roberts. Upper room. Good evening, everybody. Meeting's adjourned.